We call it the order, the Lewisville Town Council meeting for October of 2014. We want to welcome all those that are in the audience tonight to tonight's meeting. We certainly do appreciate your attendance and the interest that you show in our town, in your town. One of the things that we do as a thing of calling the role, we actually introduce each, each of our council members to you and the members of our staff. The man in the mirror is our Mayor Protem, Sandra Mock, honored to her right by Councilman Ed Smith and then by Councilman Jeff Singer. Now that is Councilmember Robert Green, Councilmember Mike Horn, and our sixth council member, Dr. Ken Sattler, is unavailable to attend tonight's meeting, so he will be absent. We have heading our town staff and who, and individuals that lead us through our meeting tonight, our town manager, Dane Perkins, accompanied by our town attorney, Bo House, Ms. Joyce Walker, our town clerk, Ms. Kathy Bruce, our finance director and assistant town manager, and Mr. Marty Meyer in the audience, who is our town planner, and from time to time you will see Ms. Lynn Hall, who is our information officer and dance supervisor on the camera at the back of the, back of the room. This meeting is being recorded for playback on government channel six if you have found one of the cable. We welcome the Lewisville citizens that are watching and participating to that. I think, well, we now have members of the press that's, that's joined our meeting to listen with Cruz. Thank you, Liz, for being with us tonight. Always good to have you. We have agendas that are at the rear of the chambers, if, on the table back there, if you would like to follow along, and at this point in time, we will actually adopt the agenda that we will follow for tonight. I think there's at least one addition, is it not, from what we approved at our briefing session?
That's correct. I've added that as item five D, and it's highlighted on your agenda.
Okay. Give you a moment to look over the agenda for tonight with that addition, and we'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, you like sign. Then, agenda is adopted, and we will follow it, and we'll ask our manager to lead us through the items on the consent agenda.
This evening's consent agenda consists of six items. First is Resolution 2014056, the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for August 2014. Next is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from September 4th, 2014, the approval of council meeting minutes from September 11th, 2014, the approval of council closed session minutes from September 11th, 2014, the approval of council special meeting minutes from September 17th, 2014, and lastly, Resolution 2014057, accepting the resignation of Scott Mensey from the Lewisville Planning Board.
Counsel, are there any questions of the manager concerning any of the items that are on the consent agenda? I would just ask that, well, just going to bear our procedure to, once we accept, or I guess when we approve the consent agenda, we'll accept the resignation of Mr. Mensey. What's going to be the process for filling that vacancy?
Well, I guess we didn't talk about that last week, Ford, but I suppose we would go ahead and start actively putting out an advertisement for the position.
Okay. Very good. All right. We approve approval of consent agenda. Second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so agenda passed. We'll go to the next item.
This next item is introductions, presentations, and proclamations. There are none for this evening. It moves us into public forum.
Public forum section in our agenda, or of our agenda, is an opportunity for members of the public, members of citizens of our community, or maybe even non-citizens, to address council with, if they have any issue or anything, any information that they want to impart to council at this time. This is the first of two opportunities of this nature. So what we do, we ask that the, and we didn't have anyone sign up, so we'll just take.
Mary Gaines, I live at 7270 Melanda Drive in Lewisville, and Susan is my helper this evening. I'm here records, I think, the Lewisville Historical Society, and specifically the Nissen House project. If you have been on Arrow Leaf Drive since September the 25th, you know that the Nissen House has been transformed, and we have given you some pictures that, that show the work in progress and in the completed project. The stormwater basin has been filled, and the grade has been raised to the level recommended by the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office, and the landscaping work is almost complete. We have installed erosion controls, including matting on the slopes and silt fencing along Arrow Leaf Drive and Lucy Lane. This work was made possible by the generosity of the Lewisville Town Council, and we thank you all for your ongoing support of the Nissen House project. Our next step will be to obtain a termite protection contract for the house, and funds permitting, we also plan to apply soon for a water connection for irrigation for the grass and shrubs. We have contacted Old Salem to help with long-term planning for the restoration landscaping of the property. Then, our next step is to begin rehab and restoration work on the front facade of the house. The State Historic Preservation Office has recommended that we return to the original appearance of the house, which had no front porch and a shallow overhang supported by the two bay windows, and there will be two wide brick steps going up to the front of the house. We will be consulting with our architect, David Gaul, and our contractor, Alfred Wilson, to see how much of their work our current budget will cover. Our goal is to have as much work done on the front of the house this fall as our funds will, will permit. We will continue our fundraising efforts in the community, and we'll especially target the Marion Stedman Covington Foundation in its next grant application cycle, which is in March. Again, many, 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 many thanks to all of you for helping us to move forward with this important community project. We deeply appreciate it, and we're so excited that we've got this much done to the house. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we certainly appreciate the update on the work that's been done. Our congratulations to, to the supporters of the Nissen House on getting this project underway, and we look forward to future reports also.
All right.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Lang Wilcox. I live at 1210 Forestwood Drive here in Lewisville, and don't have a lot to say, I just wanted to mention a few things for you tonight, that you have a couple of resolutions on your agenda this evening, which are to move forward, our request for rezoning of the estates at Lasara, as well as our request to bring our rezoned subdivision into Lewisville. And I just wanted to mention to you for a couple of minutes, that we began working on this project once the new LRO was approved back in April, and through a lot of meetings with several members here, Bo and Joyce and Marty, we've been able to get through some things that make sure that everything was done the way that we had set out to, and the way that I think this project sets at this point is that it is really what I had felt the town wanted to see in the outlying areas from the get-go, clear back to the early or the mid 90s when the PRD ordinances were put in place, and then reaffirmed with the new LRO guidelines that were just approved in April. We've worked hard to make sure that we did something very nice for the town, that you guys would be not only okay with having come in, but maybe excited, because it is something that I think that is a real good addition to the town, and hope you all feel the same. We've worked hard trying to make sure that our neighbors are satisfied. We did, I will tell you that, and you may have heard, we did have a little opposition. It really came down to the age-old question of traffic that comes with growth. And although we could have done a density at this section of Lasara that could have been four times more than what we're asking, or, well, we could have asked for 54 lots in this section, we're, we're asking for a total of 21, so it's not quite that, but it is a much lower density section. And I wanted to tell you for a second why we arrived at this. We had already sold three home sites to existing homeowners, and although we saw that the market had changed since the Great Recession began, we were challenged with the idea of, how do we get what we need? How do we get towards that direction that we need in order to have a product that will move well, be attractive, be priced right, so we can reach a broader market base? But also, one of the top things on our list was, how do we do something that does not affect, negatively affect, the existing lot, lot owners? So we felt like we had arrived at a good resolution, that this is an average overall density of a little over four acres per lot. It gives us a range of a minimum lot size of two acres up to almost five. We preserve 17 acres of flat plain area down on the river and 900 feet of riverfrontage for common open space. And by working with our owners, and I, I have three letters from the three existing owners that are in approval with our proceeding with this process, I can provide those to you if you'd like. But in addition, we went, and, and, well, before I leave that, that allowed us then to make certain that we were doing the right thing by the people that were already in there, as well as doing what we needed to move forward with or towards in order to get the subdivision moving along better after the recession. The last thing is that our opposition that we had with the adjacent property owners, again, was primarily related to just the increased traffic, although we did have it much lower density than we could have asked for. There was, as there always is, concern over traffic. Although we can't affect that, we, we did indicate to them certain things that we had done in order to make it so that we, it was going to get better in some ways. And then, the second thing is, we worked through that, we agreed to take over Thunderwood Farm Lane, to maintain that by the estates of Lasara, HOA, and I guess that's it. If there's anything else, we feel like we've addressed everything that we've needed to. If you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I failed to mention that for this, in both segments of our public forum, that we're here to listen to input from, from public, and we don't actually get into discussion or, or response and debate, so I failed to mention that earlier. Is there anyone else that would like to address council at this time? Okay. Hearing none, we will close the public forum, and I will mention that we do have forums on the table at the rear of the chamber for written comments, if anyone would like to use that method. With that, we will go to the next item, which is new business.
Okay. Section five, for new business. to make an extra principal payment, along with the November scheduled debt service payment already budgeted, and that is for the financing on this building.
Counsel, is there any questions of the manager? We did cover this, this item in our briefing session, and basically, just as, as the town in our debt payment is much like what we have in our individual circumstances, or if you pay forward, a payment or two here and there, you cut down on the total interest. And so, I think, Ms. Bruce, if I'm standing, if I'm correct, this, this one payment will basically save us over the life of the loan, some $22,000. Is that correct? That's for information purposes. We'll, we'll work hard to make additional payments in the future to keep, keep cutting that down. What's the pleasure of the council? Order number six. 2014056, we have a motion to approve, and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, if you'd like to sign. Okay, ordinance passes.
The next item on, on this new business is Resolution 2014058, setting a public hearing on an annexation request by the estates at Lasara for, for Thursday, November 13th, 2014, at 7:30 PM at the Lewisville Town Hall at 6510 Schalford Road.
If you heard the comments earlier, that this is a voluntary annexation requested by the owners, proprietors of the property in question. We go through a very set, and I guess it's set by a state statute, the process on annexing, even if it's voluntary, we still have to follow the rules and regulations. So, this has been through the public, the public hearing and the discussions by our planning board. It was recommended approval, and so now we're looking at setting a public hearing for, for the council and for the town from November the 13th at 7:30 at our next council meeting. What's the pleasure, counsel?
Motion to approve Resolution 2014058.
Second. Second. Mr. Horn? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, if you'd like to sign. Okay, the resolution approved, and sets the public hearing for November 13th, 2014. Please sit down and see.
The next item is 2014059, setting a public hearing for Thursday, November 13th, 2014, at 7:30 at the Lewisville Town Hall at 6510 Schalford Road, on the rezoning request by estates at Lasara to rezon the area requested for annexation from AG to YR, web AG and YR to RS40 PRD and YR PRD. This is a related item for the annexation public hearing that we have scheduled for next month as well. This item, the resuming, has been through public hearing and planning board with favorable recommendation.
Okay, very good. Can we ask our planner to explain YR PRD, or YR, and YR2PRD?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the staff report in front of me, but essentially, what the applicant has asked that we do is take it from the existing, as it says, the AG and YR, to RS40, YR PRD, which is its length, it's site related, and that we did have a rezoning request to look at at the planning board, as well as an accompanying PRD plan, and what the staff did was take the PRD plan and check it for its appropriateness. We have existing PRD regulations and requirements that they must meet, and we understand, and as it stands right now, the juris, the appropriate jurisdiction for the property is the county, but given the, the mechanisms that we've already established this evening, that we do have a valid annexation request, and we had vetted this with the Institute of Government and Chapewell, they, they seem to think that this is a perfectly appropriate thing for the planning board to take up and, and look at the mechanisms as they would be, and this is what this kind of sets up, is that our next meeting on the 13th, you would have actually both items on your agenda that come into you concurrently, and the annexation would be taken up first, and if it should be moved neighborly, then the next order of business would be to take up the staff's recommendation, the planning board's recommendation for the PRD plan and the resuming.
What's the difference between the RS40 PRD and the YR PRD?
Essentially, it's the PRD aspect of it. They're not asking for any of the other uses that, that generally RS40 would allow. This specifically aligns itself or attacks, or connects itself to the, the specific PRD plan as it was presented by the applicant and his owners.
Will there be a site plan with that?
Yes.
Thank you, Marty. Marty, before you step down, real quick, the, as I understand, the roads will remain private roads?
Yes, sir.
And the, even though they're main, they're remaining private roads, we understand that they are, will be built to DOT specifications for town roads?
Yes, sir. In fact, what we did as part of our review, we, we checked with NC DOT. They have a subdivision roads manual, I think the latest edition of it is 2010, and the development was built to the local residential road standards as established by NC DOT for shoulder section, road width, patio cross-section, and everything. There was one notable thing about the plan, most of the roads, some 3,400 linear feet of road are already in, but there will be the need for a new cul-de-sac, and I'm not exactly sure what exactly the length of it was, it wasn't very long, but they would also have to build that to that same standard, and in fact, since the fire protection, the fire protection requirements have changed since this was originally put in, that specific section of where it'll have to be made a little wider, have to be made 20 feet wide to comply with the international fire protection rules as they now are.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Marty. Okay, we have Resolution 2014059 before us, and in the public hearing for the rezoning request. What's the pleasure, counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second. Hold a second. Mr. Green? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, if you'd like to sign. Okay, that resolution passes unanimously. Go to the next item.
Okay. The next item was added this evening, and it was not on our agenda for last week, is ordinance 2014057, amending budget ordinance 2014027 in an amount of $400 to replace broken Marantz recorder, portable, with a Zoom H-6. What this is all about is, we have a recording device, we, we actually have several of them, three in total. We have one that moves back and forth between this building and the annex to handle various committees that are, are meeting over there. We have discovered since we met last week, that that portable recorder that we use is non-functional and broken at this point. So we ask that the town council consider this budget amendment this evening, so that we may go ahead and replace this recorder prior to any other disruptions for committees.
Questions of the manager? Correct. Okay.
Questions on board?
Sorry. Thank you. Mayor Protem? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes also.
Next on the agenda is appointment order 2014007, appointing Spencer Ballas, Ian McCool, Emma McCool, and Thomas Cole Moser to the student leadership committee.
We're very pleased that we have these appointments coming up. This is one of the most important committees that we have in the town, and I might say too, we're very unique in that standpoint of having students take up leadership positions associated with the operation of the town and, and even participate in some of the committee and project work that goes on. So always, we're looking for bright young students to step forward, we're very pleased to have them come forth at this point in time. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that appointment does stand, it has passed. We do have one of the members with us tonight, Simon McCool. We appreciate you being here, along with your mother, and we wish you the very best. Thank you for willing to, to share your time and your talents with us, so we look forward to your participation. Okay, that brings us to item 5F.
5F, number one, is the consideration of ordinance 2014044, amending Town Code Chapter 44 by removing references to privileged licenses and adding language regarding permit applications. And this was an ordinance that was covered last week in our briefing. Specifically, it addresses changes to general statute regarding privileged licenses, and they're going away officially, so it does change the ordinance to reflect the removal of privileged licenses, and also adds language regarding permit applications, so that we could still go ahead and have people signing up for permits for doing such business in town, like being a tenured merchant, but it is not a privileged license application.
And this is in keeping with the changes at the state assembly level?
Yes, sir, it is.
Very good. Well, that amendment comes forward with about ordinance 2014044. Pleasure.
And if, in my place, there was a request that we make sure that exemptions that were in place relating to privileged license taxes...
in place relating to privileged license taxes remained effective with regard to peddlers and itinerant merchants, and those modifications have been made by Mrs. Walker. And so all of those exemptions and additions to one that we previously had in place are included in what is before you this evening.
Thank you for that clarification. That's the direction, counsel. Motion to approve ordinance two zero one four four. You have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the like sign. The ordinance passes?
Yes, we have a related ordinance, it's under F two. This is ordinance two zero one four zero four five. This is an ordinance, amending budget ordinance two zero one four zero two seven fee schedule. Majority of this amendment has to do with the removal of privileged license references from our fee schedule.
That brings us to this ordinance. What's the pleasure, counsel? Mr. Green makes motion, or they'll, sir. We have further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that ordinance also passes.
The next section is G, and with this section, all of the resolutions have to do with changes to the general charter for committees and boards that we have various set up in town. Town Clerk Joyce Walker wants to say a couple of things related to a small change from last week's discussion.
If you had an opportunity, it isn't in your actual package, but in other documents for October for 2014, I made one small change to the front of each one of those charter changes, and that was to do a reference to the Town Code Chapter that it will update. So you won't see it if you go through your iPad, you know, on this package, but if you do go to other documents and look at the same order number, you will see that little change. For example, a reference to Chapter thirteen, or Chapter sixteen, or whatever. But I wanted to add that in so that American Legal could go ahead and get started on their updates. That was the only change that I made.
So it's actually the same change for each and every one of the charges?
There'll be a change for each one, depending on which one it needs to go to. And that was the only comparison that I made.
So aside from that, what Ms. Walker just said, everything else that we have for you this evening in these charter changes is identical to the charter changes that we had last week for discussion. We'll go through them one by one. If anyone has any questions pertaining each of these resolutions as we do, then we can answer them as we go. The first is resolution two zero one four zero five zero, amending the Parks Recreation and Cultural Development Board Charter.
Motion to motion. Second. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Next is resolution two zero one four zero five one, amending the Louisville Beautification Committee Charter.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Next item is resolution two zero one four zero five two, amending the Louisville Recycling Committee Charter.
Roll. Motion to motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes.
Next is resolution two zero one four zero five three, amending the Louisville Stormwater Advisory and Education Committee Charter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one point. The purpose, and I think first of all, for those in the audience, this is not the first time we've seen these resolutions. They were presented to us in briefing, we had a chance to look at and review the changes that were presented to us by staff to explain. So the activity this evening really is more or less kind of following up with information we already had. This is, as Town Clerk mentioned, it gave the changes a really more structural nature and actually forms to codes. But Stormwater, I just want to raise one quick question. This bigger committee is primarily, it's primarily function is education and making sure that we adhere to the education component of the state's order in case of one of the warrants. I do want to again mention that the Utilities Committee is moving on a very, very fast track for a lot of the things that we're doing, and stormwater management to the downtown area, the L W one, L W two, is very critical that, and with the Great White Road planning and construction study being dug, it's really important that we decide how we're going to manage and how we're going to do the stormwater in the downtown of the world, basically. There's really only two decisions on that, and it's just to continue with the path that we already have, which is individual, uh, retaining ponds, and that's just, that is a lot of, a lot of issues. The others could be a localized system that would eliminate the individual retention ponds, but also allows the opportunity to recoup some of the cost of that system as more businesses build out. So they, instead of having to build their own ponds, they can reimburse the town for the cost of providing a regional system. So I have no explanation, just to say that, again, I encourage our council, I encourage our manager to move forward very, very quickly to put together an ad hoc group, a task force, whatever we like to call it, that can deal with this once the city issues with this once.
We do have this on the agenda as H after we finish with this. Oh, you're good.
That was very, very quick response. We, listen, we've got the call for vote. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That passes.
The next is resolution two zero one four zero five four, amending the Louisville Public Safety Advisory Committee Charter.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The resolution passes.
The next is resolution two zero one four zero four three, amending the Louisville Utilities Committee Charter.
Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion?
I still have a concern with the three-member vote. When you have a seven-member lobby there, about that three, it probably went to a seven member lobby, so we've got four, not three.
Just the motion to approve changing that?
I think the charter amendment addresses that.
I'm sorry.
I think the charter amendment we have, that we discussed last week, addresses that.
I thought it's a three. Well, when we put seven people on it, I thought we were going to form a, had to be a four.
I think that's what, is that not what you were saying?
Yeah, it says that the, for meetings, the majority of the voting committee members, one of, okay, one of which must be chair or vice chair, but no less than three. And then we inserted the words, or a majority of the committee constitutes a quorum.
Majority of the committee, the majority of the committee members present?
Those appointed, for the younger part, would be typically, not those, not those present would be, for example, if you have, if you had, not all the places filled, it would be majority of the ones that are seated, but if you have, if you have a whole house of seven, it would be a part of four.
So if you only had five members?
Something happened.
If you only had five, ten, you'd still have four, four to vote.
Well, the intent is that, the intent was that if they had seven people, that you could have a meeting if you had a majority of the seven people, if they had seven people appointed. If you had five, it would still be in a majority. So it slides back and forth based on the number of appointed positions.
And if all seven were ten, it would be four.
Is the verbiage similar or not to what's on the planning board?
Okay. Bob was saying he believes it is.
We are ready for a vote, then.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Resolution passes. The last of many? The ordinance.
The last is ordinance two zero one four zero five one, amending the Louisville Planning Charter, planning board and resoning board of adjustment.
So it's the same amendment to both boards, and so all are the same? I'll second the motion. Now, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the like sign? Okay, that passes. That brings us to the discussion.
That does bring us to the discussion on stormwater this evening. And following up on Counsel McHorn's discussion earlier, I would have one recommendation that I'd like to put forth to the town council for consideration this evening. Before me, I think we put this information in the council's Dropbox last Friday for that. This is the Arcadis study that was provided to Council in Dropbox. It was a stormwater, a regional stormwater of the downtown area. It was commissioned in 2009. Now, I have a couple of things to say about this. We have had a meeting since last week with the principal engineer that was associated with doing this work with Arcadis. And in that discussion, we had with her, we had a discussion that centered really around since 2009, we were assuming that there had been relevant regulatory changes that have come into place since 2009 when the report was done, and there's certainly dollar-figure changes that have come into place since 2009. What I would propose, and this goes hand in hand with the idea of forming a committee to look at things in the future for stormwater, regional stormwater, that we start first by looking at a proposal from this individual who is now with a new company, where she is the one that, the new company is with StanTech, but they do identical type of work with Arcadis. She is going to provide us with a proposal for the consideration of the town council to update the information that was given to us in 2009. It is updated to regulatory stormwater environment, as well as updated to the cost potential for getting involved as well in this project. And then going along with this is a new piece of information, the proposal for the project, if we go forward with it, would also give us the basic framework for discussion on how you finance both the installation of the stormwater, or regional stormwater facility, and provide for its ongoing maintenance through financial consideration. So I would recommend to the council, that as part of going forward and considering a regional system, that we do so first by considering an update to the information from 2009, so that we have all the relevant and current information available as we begin consideration of a regional system for the town.
One question, I guess, to the attorney. Two thousand nine study was by another firm? Do they own the property of that study, or was it she was going to audit?
Typically, it's done for the town, it's the town's property. And she said she could handle this a couple of ways. I mean, she's gonna have, she has a copy of this herself already, it's not a trade secret for us. We can either treat this as a brand-new study, just, but it is essentially just going to talk about what has changed since 2009, what our options are for regional stormwater, and talking about updating our cost considerations, and how much things have changed from a price standpoint. And the most significant thing that is involved from our discussions was that since 2009, the regulatory environment and the regulations period have changed substantially, substantially enough that we can't go by this 2009 study with any degree of certainty.
Any indication as to the timeframe that this might be available this far?
The proposal? The proposal will be given to us one week before our briefing for staff to go over, and then we will have that for the November sixth briefing.
You have a feeling for, I'm sorry. You have a feeling for the cost, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I'm like, go on with it.
Are we talking a $50,000 study, or are we talking a?
I'm not sure if it's going to be 50. I want to say, and I can't be for certain on this, but I have heard originally that the original study cost 20. So I'm not sure what an update would be. I hope that she'd have benefit, or StanTech would have benefit of some of the calculations and work that was done previously, but I just won't up that until we see it.
So what would be agreed to upfront as far as obligation and thing?
Well, this evening, what we're talking about is going forward and considering a proposal at the next briefing that we have in November, and then deciding whether or not we want to acquire in this study. And then having the material updated, and like I said, the information provided to us updated, so about what stormwater is on a regional basis. The way I look at it, if we're going, if we went as far to get a group of people together and we talk about regional, the first thing any group of people is going to want to know is, what are the facts? So I can see that any group of people, council included, is we, even if the council was to get together and talk about regional stormwater, the very first thing the council needs to know are what are the facts on the ground that we will have to deal with in this situation? And this is the only way to get it done, is to have someone take a look at it, revisit it, and then report back to the town. We'll have the information, and then after the information has been vetted by town council, the council can determine the best course of action for next steps.
So what would be presented to us in November?
The proposal for what the update will look like and how much the update will cost. Yes, sir.
How do other groups do this kind of work?
There certainly are.
I mean, just, I think it's a good business sense of good groups. On our part, maybe see if there are others who might want to do an update to this as well, based on the same parameters that we're talking to this person on. I think, I'm not suggesting that any consultant would unfairly inflate the cost of doing an update, because it's going to be 50. How will that work?
Okay. What I would probably want to propose then is to wait and see what the proposal looks like that we get, and then to make sure that when we go out and get a comparative proposal, that we do so knowing what exactly we are asking for in comparison. And then, so that may add some time to what I suggested. If I'm going to wait and get the proposal, know what is being, and then go out. I mean, I guess I could describe that to anyone, but there's no, we may end up having some variation between the proposals.
It might be, it might be simpler than that. If we, if we ask also the company that did it originally, can you update this proposal?
That's true, yes.
Just get them, get them, give them some proposal to update. I like the idea of the engineer who wrote it doing it, but how, you know, and they'll give their proposal, there'll be two right there.
Understandable, yes.
And the second thing is, do, do we have to wait till this study gets completed before we begin to appoint the members of, I don't think I'm a cult, maybe with this advisory, the stormwater advisory, do we go ahead and begin to sort through that and get those folks appointed? So that we, again, we're running on both tracks, and so we can wait for one to pass through.
Well, we could, but what, again, what I would suggest is that once we see the results of the study and what it entails, there may be different things that you would ask an advisory group to get into and to look at for the town, and they may not be evident until you see the results of the update.
Well, a group could be formed, and they could have the background, the orientation, and the understanding of where we are, why it's supported, where we're going, and sort of references to the comprehensive plans, and history about why we ended up with retention ponds versus a regional. versus a regional, so that all of that stuff is in place, so that when the report is presented, they think, or run with, they're not saying, okay, well, where did this come from and how did we figure? Again, I'm not, I'm kinda, I'm just thinking, it takes a slick arm to get anything done.
Well, I think looking at the timeline for the GWR, assuming that we move forward with the GWR planning process, by my estimations, even if we were to start post haste with this process, we're probably talking about a two-year period before we get finished with the environmental document, final design work for it. So I agree that we do need to move on it, but we probably do have a little bit of the time to consider the results of the study and then determine what type of input we need from any type of group.
This is a secondary foyer on the Great Wagon Road.
That's true.
That's possible, you know?
That is the possibility, but I'm not, when I say, yeah, when I say a year to a year and a half, I'm thinking maybe a year on the not yet.
Again, I guess I go back to standpoint. I'm not sure we have to wait for one bomb to evolve to begin to do the next step. And I just, if nothing else, let us begin to identify individuals who may have an interest in participating, so that we have some way of working on this process and we're not, we're not just saying, okay, we've got the study, let's try to find. It's taking another two months to find a group of people, get together and get oriented and find out where we're going. It seems pretty simple, you know?
Now, we are in the midst of advertising for additions to the current stormwater committee.
That's true.
That's in the kitchen.
Well, yeah, but, you know, it started out as a total stormwater committee. But we lost some expertise off of it, very naturally. And my thought was that we might could, once again, if we find the right talent and willingness to serve, that we could fill those vacancies out with individuals that could fill this particular role.
However it works, I just like to try to see us not kinda,
I think from the standpoint of an advisory committee, there's a couple of different ways. I think if we were going to go forward with this report as you are today, if anybody's looked at it, especially for the northern pond, it's broken down on A or B, wetlands versus retention pond, and it has cost factors broken into it. There are pros and cons to both ways of going about it, and a lot of information about what goals and objectives have to be taken care of. Past that decision, that's a fairly straightforward decision on which way you wanna talk about handling the stormwater that's laid out in this and the options. Probably in the future, more of an input area for a citizen advisory group would get into the structure and makeup of how you finance the facility in the future, how you get it paid for, and then how you fund it from a financing mechanism through fee structures and equity, things like that. So in my mind, it's less of an input point for an advisory group for the town council on what you do, which A or B, and it's more that after you've decided that you are going to do a regional system, you do know how much it's gonna cost. The determination is gonna end up being, how are we gonna pay for it? And how are we gonna pay for it will affect a lot of people in town differently. And I think that's an opening for people as an advisory group that can weigh the pros and the cons as far as ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the storm drain facility, and also what we get into by becoming a regional player, and whether or not that's the way to go or how you pay for it in the future.
Keep in mind, though, is the system we have right now, every individual property owner has to do their own, and they have to maintain it. So all of these guys that have these ponds down here are already paying an expense for maintenance. And so, in my opinion, that's something that can be easily solved with the municipal service district if someone's had to take care of it. I think the real issue for me is, we're getting ready to pay people to start to design this one section of the Great Wagon Road. The collection system for that stormwater needs to be designed and put in at the same time. And so we really need to drive this bus, make a determination as to what it is we wanna do, how we wanna handle it, so that that designs part can happen all at the same time, so we're not redesigning what we're doing. So I guess that's, I guess what I, and correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman, my issue is, is I don't feel like we have lots and lots of time to mess around with it.
And to remind everyone, what we do have for the scoping of the GWR design is with the final design of David McKee down to Shallowford Road where the roundabout is. The scoping that we have in place with the designers includes the calculations for the hydraulic models that are required to determine the pipe diameter. So when we go forward with final design on the road, it will be with the calculation of what the necessary drainage pipe sizes are needed if we ever go with the regional system. If we don't go with the regional system, a larger pipe is of no consequence. But the project that we have for the design of the GWR, for final design, will include, if we write it that way, and it's in the scope of work that we discussed so far, to figure out and assess the size necessary for a regional system if it goes that way. So that is already in play.
I think that's a great point. I'm more concerned about the person that buys, the business that buys Fred Moser's house, decides they wanna put the business there. And right now, their only choice is a retention pond. The person who buys the house next to that, their only choice is to put the retention pond. I think pace of development is going to dictate a lot the feasibility of whether we have a regional system or not. So I just think we gotta put this thing in here. And I'm not sure I understand the reluctance to move ahead and get individuals oriented, onboard, and ready to go as quickly as possible. All these other things are important. They are gonna occur in the timeframes that they're gonna occur. The question is, what is the resistance when you're adding this one thing?
Well, from, what is it, what specifically? In identifying the members, are we going to constitute the committee or just tap on people for their interest in serving?
Now, I think the mayor was pretty clear on that. He said, we're gonna use the existing stormwater committee, and we're gonna extend the membership on that so that we have some expertise in some of these areas that we were talking about.
Okay.
I think we've discussed that in the past, but not that was firmly ago. I think it is all compressed, you know, to move forward, certainly identifying and getting the committee beefed back up, so to speak. Also, I think, you know, the regional system will serve other than just, or probably the local, will serve other than just the construction. You recall, that's a good, a few councils ago, it was, but this subject came up, regional versus individual. That's what we had to the study, the 2009 study. And it was determined at that point in time to give considerable part of the council members the cost of a regional system. That's probably, that's what this today have probably, has been magnified.
The manager, I think, is wanting to say, billiging the revision of the review of the current document is what are the current, what are the financing opportunities available to this group, those types of situations. So the main thing is, we'll pressure on.
That goes beyond the study that we had.
Yeah, that was the big deal for the study, is that the study from 2009 yielded your options, but it also yielded some big numbers. And what it did not give you was a lot of the information on how you go about building and financing, maintaining it in the future. So that's part of what I wanna try to accomplish with getting the information updated. Because in and of itself, a plan with an associated large number is nothing more than scary unless you are given some sort of context and framework for how you're gonna get it done.
Keep in mind that some of this expense will be picked up because we built the road. So when you look at it individually, it's just sitting there. And we're gonna put a stormwater system in. And we're building a road, it's incorporated into the road, it's part of the road. And so it's not gonna be, that's gonna help, it's just like time is of the essence. Additionally, as you said correctly, the pace of development will determine this, but understand the pace of development in town is affected by our lack of having one day. It's more expensive for Lewisville Pharmacy to come here and build their building in Lewisville because they gotta put that pond in. It's more expensive for Baptist to do it. You look at that pond, that stuff costs big, big money. And so anybody that's gonna come, even if it's somebody, maybe it's an accounting firm or something, that says, hey, we wanna be out of town, we wanna have, when they go to look at that piece of property to develop it, they're gonna get told right away, you better have, first of all, we have small lots. And what makes it hard is you gotta have space for this thing. Where you gotta put underground, and the cost goes even higher. So there's a lot of reasons why we need to really gear up and go on this thing.
Well, I agree, I think there's some doubt that it's a detriment to the state.
When you get into,
At the same time, though, we're under the fist of Dena and the federal government that's required.
When you do get into a regional system, and Councilman Zinger is correct, what you're doing with a regional system is you're absolving an individual property owner from the responsibility of maintaining an individual lot BMP. But there is the expectation, and I think we're gonna get into this when we see how you pay for this and the financing mechanisms, that there are fees and costs that you can push on to developers because you are doing something for them that they would not ordinarily have done. So there are replacements of cost for them. But the big deal is that they, in their own property for their deal, will not have a portion of their individual lot eaten up by a large BMP. And that's a big deal.
And the maintenance is definitely a cost. But when I tell you that pond doesn't, there's no retention pond fairy that comes along and puts that puppy in for nothing. I mean, so that's a bigger point. This is a fascinating session, and it shows at the top because multi-layered issues are not easy to understand, which comes back to my original question, is getting this committee going quick.
I think that's a necessity. But for the time being, though, I think, are we not in agreement as a council that we will go out along with your reclamation for the proposal?
Yes, that's my second.
Second opinion or second proposal? I don't know. Any questions at last, if I mean, is all right?
No. I don't think so.
Very good. If nothing else, we'll go to the next panel. Thank you. Hey, it was a good discussion.
Okay, and unfinished business, there is none for this evening. And then two administrative reports. I can get it, I've already looked it up here. These are events and holiday, events at Shallowford Square in town holidays. Saturday, the 18th, is our regular day for Shalloween, and that's going to be at the square. It's a nice holiday event, I guess it's a holiday event if you call Halloween a holiday. But it's a predominant, it's a children's event, and we usually have great success and great turnout for that event. The rain date for that would be the next week. I'm sorry, it's actually, yes, it is, next week. On the 25th is the Shalloween rain date. And then moving into November, we will have a holiday. The 27th and 28th offices will be closed for observance of Thanksgiving. And then to December, I'll go ahead and mention, on the 5th of December, we will have the holiday tree lighting in Shallowford Square. And then on the 25th, on a Thursday, we'll have a Christmas Day holiday for town offices close.
And the parade is, is that the 1st or 2nd Sunday? 2nd Sunday, December? Unbelievable, all your own effects.
Okay, the next section are approvals at the briefing meeting. This listed information are ordinances and resolutions, if there are there, are those that were passed and adopted last week during our briefing meeting. The first was Ordinance 2014-052, amending budget ordinance 2014-027 in an amount of $3,080.84 to purchase and replace a large format printer. The next was an ordinance 2014-046, and this was a budget amendment, amending budget ordinance 2014-027 in an amount of $980.77 for the purchase of five media cartridges used for in-house backup. Third is ordinance 2014-047, amending budget ordinance 2014-027 in an amount of $7,650 to repair gazebo roofs and restrooms in Shallowford Square. The fourth was ordinance 2014-050, amending budget ordinance 2014-027 in an amount of $1,625 to repair masonry on brick walls at Shallowford Square. And this was damage that had been happening over time due to weather. And then into number five, we had a transportation projects. A were some ordinances that have to do with the Shallowford Road Roundabout. The first was ordinance 2014-049, amending ordinance 2009-025, grant project ordinance, Shallowford Road Roundabout to show amended funding. The second was ordinance 2014-048, amending the budget ordinance 2014-027 in an amount of $362,500 to provide for increase in project costs as per grant funding request from STPDA funding in order to provide funds to pay for the town's 20% cost of the project and pay upfront cost of the 80% grant amount, which will be reimbursed by the NCDOT. B were ordinances pertaining to the Lewisville-Viana sidewalk project. We had for consideration and was adopted, ordinance 2014-053, amending grant project ordinance, Lewisville-Viana Road Sidewalk Extension Project. And then we had ordinance 2014-054, amending the sidewalks, bike paths, capital reserve fund. And then lastly, we had ordinance 2014-055, amending budget ordinance 2014-027 in an amount of $175,500 to transfer funds needed for the increase in Lewisville-Viana Sidewalk Extension Project, Grant Project on the 80/20 grant. Lastly, for this section, C is a reminder that the NCLM, which is the North Carolina Leaky Municipalities Annual Conference, will start this Saturday, October 11th, 2014, and run through Tuesday, October 14th, 2014, at the Corey Convention Center. And that brings us to the next section for the good of the order.
I might add to the public, seeing a number of items that we approved at our briefing, some of that was done because of the timing aspect. So with our regular method of procedure, when we do make approvals at our briefing in action meeting, we bring those items forward to our regular council meeting for openness and transparency to inform the public. So that's the reason for the long explanations through those particular items. That does bring us to the second opportunity that we have for tonight's meeting for the public to comment to council. It's as the same procedure as before. We ask individuals that want to address council to come forward to the microphone, state your name and your address. As you limit your comments to three minutes, and also understand that we will not enter into discussion or debate concerning any of the comments or issues that are brought up. Is there anyone at this time that would like to address council? And as before, as the voters, and as before, we've got forms at the rear of the room where written comments can be made. That brings us to item 3B, which is council comments. That's me. comments. That's me. Any, any, any comments or any number of council?
I just want to follow up the status on the roundabout after we end.
Thank you. I was hoping that I would have something that said manager comments, and it's not there. So glad to give you the opportunity for that. The notice and advertisements for the roundabout will happen next week on October 15th. The opening date is set for November 5th.
That's for, the returns will be.
Yes, that is, that'll be the date for the openings of the bits.
I think we should really have enough celebration on that. Schedule a lunch, but not until Murphy's time, do stuff. It's only been four years in the making, so.
As a man of, of a point of information here, this is actually one case that at the moment, we are ahead of where we need to be for the sidewalk project, which I know it sounds weird to be ahead on these types of things. But when I proposed to let the contract out in January for the sidewalk, and discussions with the DOT, they actually said that that is, that's too soon considering the time of year and the brief nature and the relative simplicity of what they say for the sidewalk project. They're thinking that the kind of, the, the contract length is probably going to be around 75 days for the length of the contract. Asphalt runs will be available on March 15th. If we start on January 1st, as I proposed, we may run into a spot where we have a contractor sitting around waiting for an asphalt plant. So.
Okay, that would be a welcome change.
Yes, I know. So more than likely, what is going to happen is, is the, the Lewisville-Viana will end up being a month behind the roundabout for this, for the project. Instead of going out next month, it'll be November, this month will be November. We do have a couple of processes for engineering firms, CEI services. We will have the notices on the CEI services advertised tomorrow, and that is going to be a three-week process. The problem with the, the, well, not the problem, but just the facts on the CEI services is when you, not only do you have a three-week process on the advertisement, you have a three-to-week, three-to-four week process on the backend for evaluation and selection. So we do have that set. If both projects for CEI are put out tomorrow, which are, that is the plan, then the selection for both would be by, by staff by November 21st. And then at that point, we will have the selection for the firm or firms for each of these projects selected and ready to go and waiting on the project to be taken care of and started for the roundabout January 5th. And then for the sidewalk project, probably in February for the, for the start date, mid, mid time then. So for me personally, I will have a busy late fall.
This is a, fully coming from right field, but Clemens received some monies for sidewalks. Is there any merit in us contacting Clemens and saying, you guys want to go in on sidewalks or projects with us and put them both out at the same time for bid and see if we can? And the, the point you made earlier was, I'm telling you, this is a very small section of sidewalk, and that's why it's costing us $225 a foot. Is there any beer at all to see if we can gang up some of these sidewalk projects with other municipalities?
It's certainly something we could look into under these current programs. I don't know if it would be possible, but we don't have to do sidewalks in the future in these programs as well.
It's awful. Strengthen numbers at those eight departments. Any, thank you, anyone else on the council?
Oh, I did. I got an email. Just as the meeting started, I got an email in regards to a citizen who'd like to come and speak with us at one of the briefings regarding some ADA things that they see on our town.
Some what?
Uh, some handicap issues.
Oh, ADA.
ADA issues. And they actually sent a picture of one of the things that they have concerns about. It's kind of, I'll get to y'all.
Two opportunities. This is each council, for each council. Okay. Anything else?
Will entertain a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.